To the City Council work session this evening, September 24th, 2019. Our discussion this evening is on a possible change to regulations on licensed care facilities. And we will turn over to Chief Lippert and have him share with us a presentation that he's put together, a little of the history and where we find ourselves. And then council will be able to have a discussion, any questions and discussion among ourselves. And that's the intent of our work session this evening. We have everyone here with the exception of Counselor Ratkin, who I think is right in the middle of production. I know Alpine is closed down and so lots of things are happening there. So Chief, welcome. And you want to introduce who we have with you?
Certainly. I have Amy Hanifin, who is our Operations Chief for the Fire Department. She's here to just to speak some process for the EMS side of the issues. And I have Debbie McDermott, who is our Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal on the other side to speak to some of the, if there's questions in particular about the fire code issues or the issues that we deal with on a routine basis in these types of facilities.
Well, welcome all, and we'll get started.
By way, I want background for the slide presentation. If you're in your books following, almost there on the main computer. It just told me that. This ordinance is, 5059 was specific around the care home business license and the 911 use, the use of the 911 system. Thank you.
Chief, if you could make sure your mic is more in front of you.
Certainly. Sorry about that. Thank you. And then I can do this. For background for the council members, because it's been a year and a half process, if you don't mind, I'd just like to touch a little bit on how we got to where we are. In 2010 and 2011, there were a series of teleconferences coordinated by the fire service that involved DHS offices licensing and qualitying, as well as the care facility industry statewide. And some of those meetings were set up specifically because of the challenges the fire service were having in the use of the 911, the emergency response system, whether it was with ambulances or fire units, depending on the type of the facility. As a result of that meeting, DHS produced a handout. And the direction was, those handouts were sent to the fire service, they were sent out to the care facilities, and the fire service was given the direction from DHS, or the council from DHS, they don't direct, but the recommendation, if you have challenges, continue to use this flyer as a training opportunity to educate how this, what they should and shouldn't be using the emergency services system for. Most of that was designed around lithoscists and those types of issues. From 2011 to 17, the Fire Department here in McMinnville continued to educate staff on those types of issues and those types of concerns using that information. We found that as time progressed, more and more turnover was occurring at the director level or the management level of the care facilities. We would have a conversation with the care facility management staff or nursing staff. At that point in time, we would get some resolution to some of the calls that were not necessarily emergent calls. But then we would, our data analysis would show us a peak again back to those types of facilities. We'd go back to meet with the director or the nurse manager, and there would be a new director or nurse manager in charge of the facility. So we were like puppies chasing our tails, for lack of a better term, from 2011 to 2017 in an attempt to try and keep consistent use of the emergency 911 system. At that point in time, in 2017, the non-emergency use calls continued to rise. And I'm using the term "non-emergency use calls." There's specific verbiage for that in the ordinance, and I'm, please don't, I'm not trying to say exactly the term in the ordinance, but I'm trying, just using that as a term for reference. The non-emergency use calls continued to rise from 16 through 18, 17 through 18. And some of those challenges continued to occur. At the same time, when we were starting doing the research into facilities further and further, we're seeing that our code enforcement challenges continued to arise. And issues specific to code violations and fire and life safety systems, noncompliance in care facilities continued to arise, including fire incidents in care facilities continued to arise. On the EMS side, when we initiated the ordinance, 15 care facilities with 1,093 available beds, averaging 151 calls a month. 3% of the city population lived in care facilities, that they were generating 35% to 38% of the EMS calls within the city limits. Large numbers of the, numbers of non-emergency use of the EMS system included lithoscists, transports to ERs to get prescriptions filled, transports to the hospital to facilitate evictions have occurred several times during that timeframe. And there were a large variety of residents who were of sound mind and able to make their own decisions, not wanting to go to the, be transported, but were required to by the care facility. And the staff in those facilities routinely referred to corporate policy as the deriving directive behind those decisions. Post, 10-month window, post-ordinance, 11/1/18 through 9/1/19, we had 1,060 care home calls. Pre-ordinance, same timeframe, same 10 months, we had 1,473 care home calls. So the ordinance has had an impact. And there are other things out there that probably helped with that impact. But post-ordinance, the ordinance has reduced our call volume to care homes in 10 months, down by about 400 calls. In the prevention side of the coin, we had an ongoing issue with care homes, unprinted, nonpermitted alarm system for 18 months, where fire code enforcement officials were continually working with those facilities to try and get those alarm systems up and running. We had care homes remodeling without permits and alarm systems and no smoke detectors in living quarters. We had fires in kitchen facilities where the kitchen staff evacuated without notifying the facility that there was a fire in the facility. We had residents burned in their bedroom because they were smoking in a no-smoking room, but that was not reported to the Fire Department, and there were some injuries sustained. And all of those are required state reporting requirements. When our W Fire Marshal went into that facility to try and gain some information, there was a lot of unwillingness to participate with the investigation following that fire. We had repetitive fires in laundry room at one facility that caused evacuations because the same violations were in place from year to year. And so some of the questions that we've been asked are, why is fire prevention important? Why has this ordinance increased our response requirement, our inspection requirements to annual from the two-year cycle that was placed on them by the state requirements? Those are some of the reasons that, why we found it important to get into these facilities more frequently. These are our most vulnerable citizens that we're trying to protect and take care of. They have limited mobility. We have limited operational responders when we come to these facilities with large numbers of limited mobility clients. We can be showing up in the first 10 minutes with 12 firefighters, and that's not going to be sufficient to do what we need to do to protect the lives of those individuals. So engineering, enforcement, and education become paramount in our ability to have an impact on the safety of the citizens that live in these facilities. This is, and this is only for example, the types of people on the fire scene that we would be working with in the event there was an issue at one of these larger facilities. And we have 12 firefighters showing up in the first 10 minutes. And that's, that was the intent for that photograph. Pre-ordinance, before the ordinance was passed by City Council, myself and Chief Mount, who is retired, met with care facility directors to try and explain the issues we were having, what the ordinance was going to do, and address some of the fees, and ask for feedback from the facilities. Four months prior to the ordinance, we had joint meetings with the hospital, care facilities, and the city manager to explain the ordinance. And two months before the ordinance, there was a letter sent out to all of the care facilities identifying them, that the ordinance was coming down and explaining to what was going to happen and how they would be impacted.
So at that point, what kind of feedback were you getting from the participants in those meetings?
In the nine-month meetings, we had three care facilities say we'll pass this on to corporate. We had two care facilities show interest in helping to identify the reasons in our algorithm for the non-emergency use of the 911 criteria. And the rest were little or no feedback.
Okay. Chief, did all of them participate in those meetings?
Well, the challenges that, in that nine-month window, we went back to one facility three times because directors changed three times in nine months. We went to another facility two times because the directors changed in nine months. Two of the facilities had interim directors. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say that the existing directors, current directors were the directors of those facilities that we discussed with at that time. But our challenge was that we attempt, two of the facilities indicated one director was in charge of two facilities. So that, did we go into every facility? No, but we went and hit the director of, with the one or two or three facilities that we addressed. So every corporation that is in McMinnville, we met with.
And then of the three that said they were going to pass on to corporate, was that to the same corporation? Because some facilities in town are owned by multiple, are owned by one corporation, but they have multiple facilities.
The three that, I don't, I can't remember. I know one of them was the Brookdale facility out north. And I can't remember the other two. I know there were three that indicated, because I took notes when we were having the meetings. But we never got feedback from corporate during that timeframe.
So can I ask a follow-up question to that? In communicating this, then, clearly it sounds like when there is a change in staff at that level, there is not a conveyance of that information from one director to the new director.
I can't speak to the communication transfer between the directors.
But in your experience, you had to re-educate.
When we went back in, the individuals we talked to that were either an interim director at the time or a new director, they had said, there was either, we didn't know anything in one instance, or we heard about it, but we don't know what it meant. So we, there was a re-education process with those directors when we went into those facilities.
Okay.
Chief, just out of curiosity, when did the Oregon Healthcare Association come into the picture?
Quite frankly, I'm not, David may have a better timeline than that. I've never, prior to the ordinance passing, I never had any contact with the Oregon Healthcare Association.
So they didn't really come to the fore at all until after the ordinance passed?
Correct.
But there was correspondence sometime in August, from us and Fee Stubblefield, who actually is leading the ordinance, regarding wanting to get together for a conference, and we offered them dates. August 29th emailed Fee Stubblefield, offering six dates from September 3rd through 13th, August 30th, and draft ordinance, as possible times to sit down and discuss the draft ordinance. At least that's the notes I have on this. And then there's a September 4th email from Fee, which basically said that they were not available until October 7th, 9th, and 10th, I believe. So there was communication even before the ordinance, but they were not interested in meeting or could not meet, according to what I, the information I had. Is that correct?
I believe those communications that you're referring to happened just this year and not last year, prior to the passage of the ordinance.
Oh, okay. My apologies. So yeah, so they just happened.
The first communication I'm aware of that came from the Oregon Healthcare Association, I believe, was a letter that we received in December of 2018, which was a couple months after the ordinance had passed. And Chief, when you were meeting with the care facilities, did any of them make a mention that they belonged to the Oregon Healthcare Association, or that you ought to speak with representatives of the Oregon Healthcare Association? Did they instruct you?
At no time was there any mention.
There was such a thing as Oregon Healthcare Association.
Everything was deferred to corporate. All of the facilities that had any hierarchy that it sounded, in my impression, was that they were deferring it to corporate for evaluation.
And we didn't get feedback, we didn't hear back after it was referred to corporate?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
What, after they reached out in, did you say December of last year after the ordinance passed?
No, I didn't. No.
David said that. Okay. So what kind of conversations happened from, say, December through September this year between staff and the Healthcare Association or some of the affected industry?
The original conversation, the attorney spoke on the phone with them at one point in time, and I don't have the information around that conversation. And then we received a written letter of concerns that the city did, is that accurate? I don't want to be Ms. Ack, I don't want to.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to detail timeline here.
Communications were not with me, they were with the city administration, they weren't with me, so I can't.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I think that there were independent, and it's kind of hard to tell whether it was coming from OHCA or coming from Fee Stubblefield personally, or coming from Mr. Stubblefield in his capacity as Chair of the Oregon Healthcare Association, or just concern set as a new owned a business here in McMinnville. I know that there was outreach after the passage of the ordinance to the mayor independently. There was the letter that I referred to that came from the Oregon Healthcare Association in December, which raised several questions about the ordinance, many of which were addressed through the revised ordinance that's in the packet. And then there were, there was a telephone call that occurred between me and members of the Oregon Healthcare Association. I didn't know that that's who I was going to be having the phone call with, because the phone call was supposed to be with the chief petitioner for the initiative petition, who I thought was Arthur Bradley. But when I got on the call with them, it turned out to be representatives from the Oregon Healthcare Association, and the chief petitioner, Mr. Bradley, was not on that call. And then I think there have been other emails that you referred to, that are all public record emails between the city and the Oregon Healthcare Association, trying to set up meetings or not being successful in setting up meetings, including prior to tonight's council session. If you would like, we could try to pull together a detailed timeline of those communications for you.
I mean, mostly what I'm interested in is what hap, I mean, in some ways, it doesn't matter, right? Because we're at where we're at now. But in general, I'm reminded, you know, when I first joined the council, like a year and a half ago, one of the very first things we looked at was an ordinance updating our city's wireless provider system. And in that case, there was a lot of feedback and engagement between our legal team here and the industry that we were regulating. And I'm wondering if we've had the same, it seems like we haven't had, although we've made maybe outreach efforts, we haven't had that same kind of engagement.
So I would say that, given what the chief has testified to, there was a lot of outreach and engagement with the local businesses that were affected by the ordinance. There wasn't outreach to the statewide lobbying association for the care facilities. And none of the local businesses referred us to their statewide lobbyists as people that we should be engaging with. They approached us after the ordinance was passed.
I think that what Sal is pointing to, and I wonder the same thing, is if, you know, we want to be wiser from this experience, and I think we, wondering what we could have done to be more effectively have communicated with the people, everybody that is involved? Like, should we have been talking to the owners that are remote directly to corporate? Or I guess that's the thing that I wonder, just so that we can more effectively approach it in the future. Obviously, the turnover created some challenges because the information wasn't being passed to the person taking over the role. So that's the only question I have, is obviously there was a lot of effort put into outreach locally, and then there were parties that weren't included in that somehow. So if you have any takeaways with regards to that?
Well, most of the owners are out of state, too. You have to keep that in mind. So, I mean, if the chief is going out and talking to these various care centers, and they're saying that they're passing this information out, there's not a whole lot more you can do about it.
I think what Wendy and Sal are getting at, though, is like, if we were going to pass something that affected the property owners on Third Street, and some of that property's owned out of state, we would still like to engage and work with those out-of-state property owners, so everybody is appeased of it, and not just the manager of the business that leases a tenant space.
Yeah. Obviously, that mechanism for communicating with the owners of those businesses didn't work, for whatever reason. Maybe there's something we can do, like send a letter in addition to talking to the local people? I don't know, but.
Letters were sent.
Oh, so they were sent as well.
Through the local offices, and it could have.
Gone to corporate or whatever as well?
Right. We did not send to corporate. We sent to the directors of the facilities.
Right.
I have a question about the implementation. So it's a city ordinance, but how does it affect care facilities that are not in the city of McMinnville, like Rock of Ages, for example?
Does not affect them.
Okay.
And it doesn't affect adult foster care homes, like MV Homes or anything like that?
The ordinance is specific to care facilities that fall within the regulations that are six or more, so that one, those types of facilities are under six.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna.
Go ahead, Chief. Continue. Okay. So since passing of the ordinance, there's been a lot of conversation around what we could have done better, how we could have communicated better, what input we should have taken. And so what I'm here for this evening is, now that the background's kind of out of the way, we kind of want to go through a list of some of the things that we're looking at changing and what you have in front of you. This is a work session, I'm not by any means looking to try and solicit final answers tonight, but I want you to be aware of some things that we're considering and doing and looking as we move forward, based on the feedback that we are getting from all partners, not just, not just the directors or the care facilities, or the, we have listened to residents, we've listened to, we've listened to, I personally have gone out and listened to families of, who have significant others in care homes, and listened to their concerns during the passing of the ordinance and post-ordinance, pre-petition. I was out quite regularly trying to educate and make sure that everyone understood how, why, where, what, because there was a lot of misinformation and miscommunication out there. So I kind of wanted to share that part of it. So that's where some of this dialogue, including from the Oregon Healthcare Association, that's where some of these changes are coming into play. So what you see before you this evening, obviously, is a draft, and I'm sure we'll have some dialogue on what that looks like at the end of the day, but I want to make sure that you understand that post-ordinance, we receive a lot of feedback, regardless of whatever's going on in the political realm, and we have still taken it into account, or trying to amend the ordinance to address, just for that feedback. So there would still be a specialty business license required to operate a care facility in McMinnville, so that doesn't change. There still will be annual inspections of all facilities, because we believe that's very important to the safety of the residents. There will be fees charged for facilities when they use the EMS system for non-emergency purposes, and all fees are still set by council resolution. The fees are not in the ordinance, the fees are in the council resolution. Holy moly, I need some glasses on this one. Somebody better take some PowerPoint presentation font 101. There are some new definitions related to care standards, resident safety and facility oversight. Their facilities are required to cooperate with city inspections and investigations. There's a prompt notice to the city required after change of facility ownership or their operator. Facility staffing orientation and training requirements, disaster fire and life safety planning and drills. Prompt notice to the city after disaster fire incident endangering resident safety. Requirements to certain, provide certain support services to residents, requirements to provide, and I'll go into these all in a minute. Provide certain health monitoring services to residents. Designation of residents' rights, collection charges, interest and penalties, and liquid payments and classification of infractions. We've taken the feedback from the folks that have been giving us feedback on a continual basis, and that's what we're using to come up. Regulatory gaps, there's a lot of data and news articles out there, and I did not include these in this presentation. There are some local examples of code violations, poor fire evacuation, whoops, excuse me. There are some addressed, there are some local examples of what would be classified as neglect. Limited state and federal resources for oversight, long-term care ombudsman lacks inspection or investigation authority over these facilities. The code violations that we talked about, and I've spoken to some of these, we have repetitive fires in the commercial laundry dryer with repetitive code violations of blocked open doors in the same facility with the same management staff. We had occupancy changes from institutional to residential without permits, and when those smoke alarms that are required, and all those are significant life safety events. We had kitchen remodeling that was unpermitted. Again, required permitting process that we catch when we're doing these inspections. We had OHSA, OHHS, excuse me, OHCA request for guidance and clarification in the non-emergency medical standards, licensing review and approval process, collection charges, fire marshal inspections, criteria for determining facility compliance, different standings by care type of facility, the three different types of facilities, and process for assessing non-emergency care fees. And that was a specific letter that was written to the city, that all of those have been answered, and that's why the ordinance, some of the items you see in the ordinance have been changed to reflect the responsiveness to the OHCA's request for clarification. Local feedback, we had a meeting with local care facility management and staff, meetings with local care residents, community members about their experience over the past four months, and a review of the 2018 incident and inspection reports to address what we're catching, what we're seeing. After the first round of inspections, what did we find? How much time did we have to spend out in those facilities? We already talked about that. We clarified the definition for residential support facility. In the original ordinance, we spoke to certain types of facilities, like memory care communities. That's really not a classification, so we cleaned up the language to reflect the actual state regulations on what they are. We, it still does not apply to facilities that operate outside the city, adult foster care homes, or individual living communities, so those that are independent living communities. So those individuals that live in independent living facilities are not included in this ordinance, and none of these rules apply to those folks.
Just for clarification, the memory care, they're just kind of lumped under the assisted living folks?
They fall, I'm sorry.
Are they lumped together or under this licensure?
They are a type of the assisted living facility, or residential care facility.
Residential care facility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were not a standalone facility, they fell under the type. Facilities required, and part of the ordinance addresses the facility's requirement to cooperate with city inspections and investigators, and that was specifically brought into the picture after one of the incidents where the burned individual, where the fire marshals and staff had gone out to conduct an investigation and solicit feedback. And there was some significant delays in willingness to participate in the investigation until we used some threat to contact the state DHS if they didn't cooperate. And I just covered that, got ahead of myself. Because of the continued turnover of some of the facility operators or directors, and us not having constant information of unknowing who we need to talk to when we're dealing with these issues, there's a requirement in there for notice to the city when they have a turnover of an operator or a director in those facilities. That gives us a quicker turn on who we need to talk to in the event. We now know a facility changes a director, whose interpretation or perception of what is appropriate isn't, may need some education, so we can get in the door and work our partnership beforehand, instead of after the fact, that when the data starts to stack up in a negative way. So that's why that is added in there.
Chief?
Sure.
How do we expect them to know 45 days in advance if they're going to terminate an op? How do we expect them to know 45 days in advance if they're gonna terminate an operator?
Well, okay, so terminating an operator, new owners or operators, there's going to be a purchase process or a transfer process going on. So if one facility is gonna buy out another one or something along... There's gonna be a process that goes along with that, just so that we're in the loop as to what that looks like.
There's also a state licensing requirement related to transfer of ownership and operation, and this is consistent with what the reporting requirement is to the state.
Okay.
We're just... Me, too. We want to know as well because of our local interaction with those care facilities when those people are changing.
Okay, thank you.
Of the facility staffing orientation and training requirements, there's a large part of it is, again, part of it is the partnership with the facilities themselves so that the new administrator can understand what we're trying to accomplish here in the community, so that's a part of that requirement. This requirement for orientation training within 30 days of higher and ongoing in-service training is not necessarily... It's a me-too clause. It's a, we want to verify that the employees have done the stuff they're required to do by the state. Record training must be kept and available for inspection. Training must cover a minimum of disaster preparedness plan responding to life-threatening emergencies and resident practices relating to resident safety and accident prevention.
Are all these facilities required to have a disaster preparedness plan in writing?
They're required by state law to have that plan. We're not requiring something that's not required. We're just asking to verify that they have it when we look at those requirements and make sure that when we do go out there, where they're complying, if we run an evacuation drill or an emergency drill evacuating the facility or dealing with those types of patient movements, that they're meeting the requirements of the exercise.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief, if I could ask real quick, in the event of a disaster, is it the state that's gonna be frontline responding to that disaster, or is it gonna be you guys?
It'll be us. We'll be on our own managing these incidents and with these facilities until such time as...
So is it, would you say probably more important that the local fire department have a copy of that plan than some state agency?
Makes sense for us to know what's gonna happen and what their plan is. That's correct. Why training requirements? This is one of the training requirements specifically relate to some of the incidents we've had with fires where there was lack of training on facility fire protection, facility extinguishment. There's also training requirements. I'll speak to Chief McDermott. In the code enforcement side, we have issues with fire alarm systems and understanding what they work, and I'll defer to Debbie at this point because I really would like her to speak to some of the challenges we have with some of the maintenance members as they rotate maintenance staff and those types of things in facilities.
Okay, well, good evening. So as far as on the prevention side and in the inspection of the facilities, what I've noticed, I've been here for a couple decades, and when I was out on the street doing the inspections, I would go back and quite often I would be dealing with the same director and/or at least the same maintenance folks. So the education process was there. They knew what was expected, what their systems were, how to use them, what they needed to do to keep them maintained. What we're finding now, and one of the biggest challenges when we brought a new deputy on, was getting out into these facilities that have such high life hazards, was we're finding that with the high turnover, it's not only at the administration side, it's down on the maintenance level. And every time he's going out there, he's having to re-educate on what type of systems they have, whether they're wet or dry sprinklers, what the requirements are for those systems, the annual inspections that are required, how to use and operate the hood systems, training the staff that, you know, when you have a fire, that you need to pull the pole station, which seems on our end, because we deal with it daily, kind of remedial, but he's having to re-educate on a consistent basis throughout these facilities because of the high turnover. And these are the engineering and education and the people knowing how the systems work and what's required to maintain them is paramount in making sure that these folks are safe and have those systems working when they're needed. If they fail to keep them maintained and the sprinkler system fails, we'll say, and there's a fire there, that is putting those folks in a high risk of danger. So that is why we have him focusing a large amount of time on these. And rather than waiting the two-year for the license, we came up, you know, we feel that it's much more important that we get in annually because of the high turnover, so we're at least trying to educate. We've only had one round, obviously, was this last year when it passed, that we've gotten in with the licensing for everyone. But as you see, all of these things that are brought up are since he's been with us in the last 18 months. So what was happening before was consistently as bad, but we weren't able to get out there as often. And it just kind of is, you know, backing the need for us to be out there on a more consistent basis, educating the staff on what they need to do if they have to evacuate, educating the maintenance folks on what they need to do if a system activates, how to get it back in service, what they need to do if it's out of service, they have to put on a fire watch, and what does that fire watch mean? All those things, and it is a constant continual thing that he's out educating. We had a system today, just today, we had to put in a fire watch because their system went out. So he's spending several hours this week dealing with that system, and I don't see that changing in the near future with the high turnover that a lot of facilities across the country, across the state for sure, are experiencing.
One question related to that. What do you estimate the costs are for staffing that and providing that safety inspection process? I mean...
We haven't run a cost analysis to allocate it specifically for the purposes of this ordinance, if that's what you're asking.
Do you have a sense of what percentage of his time is spent on that type of education?
We would have to really start analyzing. We have asked them to start tracking it a little more than we have in the past so that we can answer those questions as we move to the future. I think this incident, this particular system that we're working on right now, he estimated four to five hours thus far, just trying to get it back in line and get the permits done properly and online and moving forward.
Does the existing state law allow for cost recovery on that type of service? Or is the only vehicle for that city ordinance?
I don't know that there's any cost recovery through the state.
It's city ordinance.
And are you familiar with how, do other cities currently do cost recovery on that type of inspection?
They're not specific to this type of ordinance, but many cities are enacting, if they don't already have, inspection fees, which are similar, that would run along those lines.
And would this ordinance, excuse me, this charter amendment that is gonna be up on the ballot in November, would this prevent us from charging a fee?
I don't think that I can answer that.
I mean, I'm gonna advise him not to answer that. I think that it'd be speculative at this point, and I'd be afraid anything they might say would be seen as political advocacy related to the election.
Okay, so we don't know whether the ordinance would impact our ability to charge a fee?
I think it's gonna come down to a lot of different questions related to the type of fee, how we characterize it, whether it applies just to care facilities or across the board to all businesses. It'd be difficult to speculate now on a hypothetical like that, and I'd be concerned about them doing a given...
Fair enough.
...the fact that there's a measure on the ballot.
I get it. I do have a couple of... My main question about this ordinance, the two questions I have that are the main ones are... The first is, you know, when the Healthcare Association came and testified earlier this summer, they had their attorney who described her process for engaging the city of Portland in crafting their ordinances. And I wonder if we wouldn't benefit from getting their input on this. They may not have an interest in doing that ahead of the election, but assuming that, and then, which leads me to my second question, I'm curious how much of what is in this proposed ordinance would be touched by the charter amendment that is coming forward? My assumption is that the city's position is probably none of this is touched by that, or you wouldn't be bringing it to us.
I, Councilor Peralta, I would say that what you're asking for is a legal opinion that I haven't prepared a briefing for you guys on yet. I can certainly do that if requested. As to your speculation that this ordinance, that the proposed revisions to the ordinance would withstand any challenge if the charter amendment were passed, I don't think that you could say that either this ordinance, these revisions to the ordinance have been in development for more than six months. They were presented to the council in a work session in March of this year in some detail. Oregon Healthcare Association, and certainly Mr. Stubblefield, as the chair of the association, had a copy of the draft revisions as far back as March. We've spoken to various groups about them. We've made some changes based on feedback, which I think the chief will get to, or if he hasn't already. And it was always our stated intention as staff to bring this revised ordinance back to you once we finish the code compliance update work. That code compliance update work was passed by the council last month. That's why you're seeing this. You probably would have seen this two meetings ago, but for the fact that we did reach out to the Oregon Healthcare Association with a copy of this ordinance, requested an opportunity to meet with them through Mr. Stubblefield, were told that they would not be available to meet with us until October at the earliest because of their busy schedules. This was, I want to say, in late August perhaps that I reached out to them. And then my last email to them, asking if they thought that there would be benefit in us continuing meeting anyway prior to the election, went unanswered. So I can't tell you what their intention is on commenting on this revised ordinance, but I'd say it'd be too much to say that we expect that it would withstand the challenge if the ordinance were to pass. That wasn't the intent.
And so did we decide not to do the October meeting with them?
They did not respond to my last email back to them, asking if they thought it would be beneficial for us to have that meeting. So I can't tell you whether they want to meet with us before the election or not. They didn't respond.
Okay, I think it would be beneficial to meet. Thank you for your time.
Chief? Sorry, I take my head back into the game here, apologize. It does require, provides a requirement to provide certain support services to residents, define support services and non-emergency medical care, designation of support services coordinator, written policies related to monitoring residents' medical conditions, providing 24-hour non-emergency medical care to residents, coordination on and off-site services, and all support services and non-emergency medical care to be provided without calling 911. It has a protection of a resident's rights, express the grants residence rights to receive the services from trained staff, to be free from discrimination in receiving services, decline ambulance transports for non-emergency care, independently contact 911 for emergencies to report violations to the city, prohibits retaliation, and requires reasonable accommodation to be made and requires written notice of rights and alternatives. That one was added in specifically because in a lot of our follow-up meetings with whether it was independent care facilities, family members of folks within the care facilities, there was a lot of misinformation and comments and questions about, and we were being told that the individuals residing in the facilities, even in independent living, were being threatened if they called 911. And so this is how they would be evicted if they called 911, is exactly what we were being told by both residents as well as independent living residents as well as family members of folks in the residential care facilities. We just talked about that. An upgraded, updated language regarding fees, clarifying the basis for calculating annual license fees, clarifies guidance on appropriate use of 911 emergency reporting system, updates processes and guidance on when non-emergency fees may be assessed, creates an incentive facilities with limited code violations, and modifies the resolution fee schedule to allow 50% for the first offense and 100% for the subsequent offenses of non-emergency care service charge. So what the fees do, within the ordinance, some of the feedback was, one was the $1,500 charge first time was a significant price for anyone to pay, the facilities to pay, and that was some of their conversation with us. Although no one has paid that $1,500 fee yet, with council's direction after the last conversation we had and questions on, could we do a tiered, like some of the other facilities are doing? That is what we, it's not in the ordinance because it's in the fee schedule, but I wanted to bring it to the council's attention. That would be something that we would recommend if council so inclined that there could be a tiered fee, a tiered penalty for the misuse fee. And I think, Adam, I believe you were one of the ones that brought that forward. I would like to talk also, actually, I would like to talk, but I would like Chief Hanifin to speak, just for, on the record, on what the process looks like when we identify what a non-emergency use and how that review occurs.
Certainly, thank you. So as Chief relayed, we haven't actually collected on that fee yet. We have a process where when the provider goes out in the field and they are concerned that maybe it could have been a non-emergency use of our services, they will check a box for review. That then comes through a report to myself. I look through the chart and determine whether or not they missed something or there might be something in the chart that jumps out to me as, well, actually, we should have been there and truly it is an emergency use, or whether I need to do more follow-up on it. Oftentimes, we'll have a conversation with a provider, get a little more follow-up from them, and then a handful of times I've then called the facility and had a conversation with them. There have been a couple opportunities to have educational conversations with members of the facilities, whether it's the nurse staff or the director, but there hasn't been anything yet that's deemed a necessity to collect on the fee.
There's a section on collection charges, interest and penalties for delinquent payments, which was basically nonexistent in the original ordinance and needed to be addressed because we didn't have a method to address non-payments of our fees. Classification of infractions and designation of enforcement process. This was the part that the attorney was talking about. We had to incorporate the code enforcement ordinance in order to accommodate some of the infractions and designation of enforcement process. We didn't have that built, and so we couldn't move this forward until we had that built. So now this is tied directly with different levels of infractions into the code enforcement civil penalties rather than in the criminal penalty code. I know it says 68, but I...
Thank you, Chief.
So for council's consumption, we've had several options and opportunities to meet with a variety of individuals and some of the questions, including even today with the city manager. I had a meeting at the hospital. Oregon Healthcare Association was in attendance, along with some of the care homes and the chamber, and Peter Hofstadter. So I want to make sure there is some continuing dialogue going. And the intent was, Peter drove that meeting, but we were soliciting feedback, again, listening, trying to understand what were some ways we could manage some of these issues, what other mechanisms were out there, so that if council chose to not do the... So the recommendation would be, in the ordinance, is a reduced fee schedule for successful, limited or non-life-threatening violations in subsequent years, starting out at the $200 per bed fee and going down if they're successful in managing their fire code issues. That was an option that came to us from the citizens group that was in the independent living at one of the care facilities. The city attorney and I thought that was a reasonable option, a viable option. So that is the one that you see in the ordinance. But that doesn't preclude other options that may be out there. The city of McMinnville's enforcement team, led by Chief McDermott, has always been very much more in line around educating rather than penalizing. But there are penalizing opportunities rather than a flat fee structure where there are significant life safety violations in facilities. We could put a hefty fine on those that would create life-threatening situations within the facilities. So there are a variety of options. What you see and hear was the original brainchild of folks that actually live in independent living, and we kind of grabbed onto that concept. That's why you see it in here this evening. I think it would work well. It would get us into some compliance and give some rewards for successful compliance. I'm not advocating for or against it. I'm just saying that, but if that doesn't work, the other options that were discussed in some of the other places were a lower, across-the-board fee, lower, and then higher penalties for infractions that are in violation. It kind of does the same thing, except you're doing it with a negative... You're using the stick instead of the carrot. So given the direction that we heard... So, so given the, given the direction that we heard from council at the, at the last meeting, we were to bring back some other options, listen, have some more meetings, listen to more feedback, which we've done. We brought back, some of the things that we made in the presentation are the same as you saw them, some of the additions that were made specifically, the ones that are answering the, the questions that were driven by OHCA because we felt it was important that that stuff be in there to provide strict answers to the questions that were being asked. And then the rest of the stuff that has been modified is really the part that we're here discussing this evening on what it looks like, how do we move it forward, what options would council want us to pursue. We incorporated in this one the opportunity for the, for the, as I said, the induction price, and then the, in the, the recommendation would be to modify the resolution for the non-emergency use fees to include a 50% charge for the first violation and then a full charge for subsequent ones.
As we are, are getting very close on our time for the work session, a couple questions I just need to pose to the council. I'll reiterate today that we had a community meeting with many of the players around the table, and we will continue to meet. We listened very intently to the assisted living, some of the managers from them as we, we talked today. We have on our agenda a first reading of, of this ordinance, and we put it there just as a holder. The thought is, do we have a desire to move forward on an ordinance tonight or do we want to take our time? Our whole thought, from my perspective, is by passing another ordinance prior to the election, we just muddy the water up, and I don't think that's the proper thing to do. But I think as we listen to the chief and we listen to the department and administration, there is a need and an opportunity for us to tweak the ordinance more in line, especially on that specialty tack, specialty bed fee that, that's there. So from that perspective, I'll just get a sense, what would you, what would you have us do?
I would prefer to wait till after the election, but definitely before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Adam, Sal?
I'd like to see, I mean, so I think there's a culture issue here. I think the Healthcare Association is probably used to working on a state policy level where there's usually time between meetings and the negotiation happens that involves a lot of redlining of statutes. I would hope that, you know, we don't bring this up until after the election and that you use the time between now and then to engage with their attorneys, to get their sense of different aspects of this code, to get more than just their feedback in a meeting, to get their actual feedback on the specifics of the language and the policies and how it affects them.
Kelly?
I would strongly say let's wait until after the election and yes, we will continue talking.
Thank you. Zach?
Yeah, I would echo the sentiment of waiting until after the election to entertain this, and I also am not as supportive of creating a more lenient measure. I think there's some great things in here that are housekeeping issues, cleaning up, that I support, but frankly, I'm not interested in moving from our position on where we're at. I see a private industry using public services to underwrite their effort to have as little overhead and provide adequate level of service to their customers, and they're backpedaling, and this is where they're at. So I, I'm not interested in going as far as you guys think we should.
Thank you, Zach. Wendy?
I really appreciate this process, the dialogue, having put this ordinance in place, having feedback from the stakeholders and, and our own experience with it, being able to tweak it with that additional information, I think that's great. I really like the changes, especially the, I think, the opportunity to, with good, with good management, where they're taking care of the safety of their citizens that are there, giving them the reduction in the fees. I think that's a, further supports what we're trying to do. So I think I really like all the changes we have from a political standpoint. I think it would be a good idea for us to continue the dialogue, continue to look at how we can improve the ordinance we have and let the political aspect of it play out. But I also agree that with Zach, that you're addressing something that's real and that that's our responsibility to do that, right? We see a significant problem we're trying to address, so we cannot compromise that in the process of, you know, trying to have dialogue. So the balance there, right? So I'm in support of waiting, but also making sure that we're covering our basis for our citizens.
Thank you, Wendy. Chief, from my, my perspective, I am in full support of the $1,500 non-emergency, and I think as we've talked to a lot of individuals, they understand that. That's putting in 2018, a $250,000 burden on our taxpayers on non-emergency use of our system. Secondarily, you know, I think when we started this process, we probably weren't in a position to be able to understand overhead like we do today because we put a lot of emphasis at the city level to understand what costs are. And so I think we've asked, and I know Sal did, if we could put in this interim time between now and the election to truly get a cost of what the inspection and code enforcement looks like. I think we have the capacity to do that now, and I think it would help us as a council to know how we want to go about doing this, whether we do it by square footage, we talked about that this morning, or do we do it by fees for non-compliance and tracking our time? I think that would be very helpful to the council. As always, thank you for your thoughtful presentation, the overarching pieces that we've gone through because it brings us all back up to the same place, whether it be the council or those that are sitting in the audience. Thanks for the support that you two are, are giving to us. And so with that, any other comments from the council for our workshop session this evening? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and conclude our work session, and we'll take about five minutes and we'll start regular council meeting.